We're being 4:58. Good conference will now be over. So we'll open the meeting.
I'm just gonna go ahead.
Probably wanna start with what happened.
Start with the fires, please.
Yeah, yeah, yes. You get to walk and protect him, sir. Fire department.
All right, starting in the top of that photo for last year about a little more than a thirty percent increase in emergency request for emergency assistance. In, in, starting, two years ago, we started tallying everything else, inspection, public demonstrations, all that stuff, that totaled one sixty-seven. Two storms in January, one of them, I made the decision that to staff the station overnight. When, when the forecast set, states that, you know, indicates that the people that have responded to your call for assistance may have a tough time getting to the station because of possible conditions, that's when I made the decision to staff. Uh, so, now, this, the, the forecast, uh, the forecast indicated that we staffed overnight, twelve hours, seven to seven. Uh, we got no calls, but it's one of those things, you jam if you do, jam if you don't. If I didn't staff, there were then six calls and then we wouldn't be able to get that anyway, you know what I mean? So, uh, so that's what I did. And the daytime storm, um, partly because we have the, it doesn't really what we want and, and Jim and all that stuff, I had three, four members say, okay, I couldn't pay them. I told them that, but they kinda hung around and did the calls with us and I bought them lunch and, you know, so it's because of, you know, they, they would get a workout in, did some studying and all that stuff, so, and that's how we did the two storms in January. Uh, some stores on Hall Road, I, um, I, um, gave you, as, spoke about in the November meeting, I talked that it may be time for a, a false alarm system or a function ordinance. As requested by you, I came up with some language, uh, you have that as part of your package tonight, but, uh, we've been there sixteen false alarms here since the alignment online on eleven-one. I, I, I have a pretty good relationship with the owner slash management company of the place where they're telling me the right things, but I'm not quite sure the people that are contracting to fix their situation is really on top of it. I'm not sure whether this, they seem to be very responsive, but the, you know, we're still going near the false alarms, we haven't been there in a week, but, um, so, working with them, and I told them that, you know, you were, you were considering, you know, a false alarm ordinance, like a lot of communities do have already type of deal, so, um, and so that's a starting point, um, that, that ordinance language that I have in front of you. Uh, I took my experience from the city of Manchester, and Chief LeBerk got me some information on a hookset on the police side, so, my experience tells me, um, my experience indicates that everyone that I've had, it wasn't a police fire slash, wasn't an alarm feed, the police had their own fire and their own. Being a small community, I'm not gonna speak for police, but I think you can, you can morph that language into accomplishing both, if they're interested, uh, but definitely on the fire side, we need, we need to, especially, you know, with some businesses coming in and, and putting in automatic lamp systems, it's, it's not a, I'm not looking to raise capital, I'm looking to, to, for it to be a deterrent for people or incentive for people to maintain their system. You have a launch system in your house, you have to maintain your launch system.
So are the police responding when you respond?
No, they're not, uh, Chief, Lieutenant?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they are, yeah. Anytime you get an alarm, so. So this is starting point language, uh, review it and, and, you know, I can, I can tweak it either way, or I think it's time that, that we, yeah.
What's causing the, these things to happen, you know?
So anytime a launch system's putting in, whether it's a heat or smoke detector or a combination of both, they're electronic devices and you're like, the most, you know, the most fragile thing on a fire truck or thing or, or in a launch system is the electronics. Uh, so if they're not maintained, uh, and, or the deflector when they're being put in, um, you're gonna have, you're gonna have false alarms.
So nobody's lighting fires down there, pulling alarms or anything?
Nope. No, and we've had sixteen responses, one of them was the middle of the night, we had no one respond, not surprised, so Conqueror had to come and take our mutually call for false alarm or sub-source facility at three in the morning and it didn't go over well. So I would love to kinda address that, uh, so.
Yep.
So any questions on that before I move on?
Um, so the attorney sent back his comments and, um, he thought that we might have to do a second one for the police because there's an RSA that allows the fire chief to have an ordinance like this or to, to, uh, I guess draft an ordinance like this. Um, the ordinance that we have, he didn't know if it would apply as well across the board with the police department law. So, um, it does not have to go to the town leading to be passed, we can post it and then you guys can pass it. So I thought when the police chief got back, we'd run this by him and have you, have him look at it and, um, and we can, we can do this to fire one anyway right now or tonight, you could, if you have any input, you want any change or whatever, uh, if not, then we can post it and, um, then, then, uh, then you guys can go on.
Well, for clarification, just to clarify, the police chief wasn't, from my understanding, looking to, wasn't looking to drop off an ordinance on his side. I asked him for information on the police so I can get, you know, from two different municipalities and, and basically dropped the my own fire one, so he didn't come to me, he said, hey, we need an ordinance with police, I don't know, that's unusual over there. But that's, so for clarification, um, you know, that's what I'm coming for, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, I guess, when the chief gets back, I'll just show him this and see what he thinks and if they wanna do something similar or whatever, then we'll do that.
Yes.
Would this, uh, let's take Hall Road as an example, we get to the, uh, six or more false alarms, is it the select board that will decide to levy the?
Yeah, the select board can waive the.
Yep.
Waive the, uh, fee.
Yep. Yeah, if there's extenuating circumstances.
Fire chief can also.
Yeah, in some of the languages I saw on there, the, the fire chief has the, the ability to, to waive on extenuating circumstances.
Yep.
And the select board as well, so.
Okay.
That, that language should be out of there because not everything's black and white, right? Not every issue's black and white.
Absolutely.
And, and if the property owner wants to appeal the, the decision as far as being fined, they have to appeal to the fire chief. Fire chief is, uh, M L B, all on this one.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, uh, we're taking, uh, myself and Dave's replacement, I've taken a few burning appliance inspection class, I'll buy a fire marshal's office on the eighth February out in South Beach, we go on a half, just a three-hour thing because it's something we'll call upon, we probably do thirty a year and done, uh, so, uh, you know, almost one week. And a membership, Jeff Hubble, uh, resigned as of the beginning of the year, I'll be recognizing him at the member appreciation ceremony in, in March, that'll get through shortly. We have one new member, uh, she's a full-time student in New Hampshire Community, New Hampshire, um, Lake Region Community College, uh, she's currently a firefighter one in the EMT school and all that stuff, so she lives on Pup Fun. And we just had a, um, a member resign today, an inactive member, so basically it's one for one. I'm working on updating the job description for when the transition happens, between Dave and Herb, that we have an updated, um, modern, um, job description of what's called work, so I'm working on that. Our annual member appreciation ceremony is of course Monday in, in March, I'll be recognizing Hubs, I'll be recognizing new member of the year along with a few other things, swearing in a few that have joined the department within the last year, I'll be sending out if you're available, this could be a short ceremony, more than a half hour, so if you're available, I'd like to see it, and show the members with it as well. Abe's last day will be on March thirtieth, it's a Friday, and Herb's been coming in once a week, about eight hours a week, and Dave's kind of showing the way to land and everything, so that's going very well, and I kinda got my hands on a thirty on scheduling program, so, because it's two days a week, we have the appliance committee to come work the shift, and we have plenty of people in house to do that, I got myself on, I got myself into a free program and basically, see, it cost me nothing, that's gonna be, do all the scheduling for me, I have to do the, all the input and stuff like that, so, uh, so that's gonna help a lot. And on the grants, I'm wrapping up the volunteer firefighter assistance grant two thousand twenty-four, it's only a thousand dollars, so it's fifty-fifty now, so some forestry equipment. And AFG, um, two thousand twenty-three, the radio project is, is ongoing, we're still waiting for the radio order to become, come in before the install is scheduled, and the two thousand twenty-four, I'm gonna be looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars to replace, to go find new hoses and appliances for the new engine coming in, uh, so, uh, and that's, that's what it costs, and, so, I'm working on that. That's all I have.
I kinda thought Hubs was like a lifetime employee of yours.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize him as a lifetime member, yeah, as well, yeah, yeah, just as Chief has well.
We're gonna have to come up with somebody else to do his job, I mean.
He's still gonna be, he's, he asks if he minds, if he comes in, uh, every three weeks or so to do the recycling and to do this and that and be involved in the community, so he's, uh, he's, he'll always be a member of the department, but it's, uh, responses and stuff like that, and, um.
Are you thinking a health officer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't we, is that, that's a town.
He has a saying about getting done with that.
Yeah, so, yeah. Any questions?
Peter Gallery has one question, do we get, do members of the community get to come to appreciate Hubs?
Oh, most definitely, actually, we should probably put that out there, yeah, yeah, that, that Hubs.
And, and whoever else you are appreciating, get that coming, oh, good.
Most definitely, yeah, he's, uh, he's great, he's great, I, I'm looking forward to, he knows he's coming, he knows I'm gonna recognize him, so he's kind of.
Pretty.
Excited and, and it's a state of Florida, like we, I like to recognize Chief, Chief Haswell last year, so.
He certainly.
Uh, yeah, most definitely, yes, so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Good, thank you.
We have a lot, yeah.
March first, you said?
March.
Four.
March four, first Monday in March, six thirty.
Thank you.
Um, before the chief leaves, we had sent you the budget last week, more or less we are final, do you have any questions for the chief as far as his budget goes?
No, I don't.
I don't either, I don't. You stayed within all the boundaries, I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, even with, uh, over expenditures in several areas of his budget, he still turned a little bit of money back in the year, so, you know, we had.
Very happy, you were a banker at, at fifteen thousand dollar repair and I get two thousand dollars in that line, I was, I was quite honestly a little bit nervous and I didn't be able to spend the budget and, and we timed some things, we deferred some meetings and some spending and, and we made it up plus some, so, yeah, happy with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good job, great, thank you, thank you, have a good night.
You too.
So the state, all the state police have covered for us. We didn't, I don't have our stats up there, because we've been pretty short this month, so other than that, there's not really a whole line in. Do you get any sense, Lieutenant, where the chief is with respect to a potential ordinance for false alarms?
No, we haven't really talked about that much.
Okay.
Um, we get them, but we don't get them to that extent.
Yeah.
You know, the fire department gets more.
Yeah.
We do respond to probably half to two quarters of them, depends on, you know, what we're doing or where it is.
Yeah.
Um, but he had, we haven't talked about that enough.
Okay.
You gonna draw it out?
Okay, well, and?
Yeah, same thing for the tenors far as the budget's concerned, the twenty twenty-four budget, um, again, they, they had, they didn't have any over expenditures other than at the end of the year, we had quite a bit of money left over enough to buy the new cruiser, so.
Yeah.
It'll show up as an over expenditure in a couple lines, but the bottom line is still in the spend.
Yeah. Any viable candidates at this point?
No, not, nothing yet, no. Um, and the cruiser, uh, right now, we're just waiting on parts for it, so it's been, it's been around bay for a couple weeks, but hopefully we'll go back, so.
I'm assuming the dispatch numbers have gone up so much because of where we changed or?
Uh, it's based on call volume, and more calls that they have to handle for us, you know, they charge us, so our call volume has increased, so consequently the numbers go up, and they have, they have increases anyway, regardless, it's just like.
There's also updates to their system, that all the departments have to pitch in the paper.
Yeah.
I love this one.
Similar to the firefighter.
To the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, now they're seeing more vehicle stops and stuff like that, call volume's up.
Nobody had questions?
No.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant, have a good night. Thank you too, stay safe, guys, thank you.
Free? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for sending that, please.
Good evening.
Hello, kind of, oops. Here we go. So, um, I reached out to Fred Portnoy, um, of the energy committee because I am starting the work of finding a burner to replace the heating system. Um, my trustees authorized a repair of burner three, which was non-functional.
Yeah.
Um, but we need a whole repair, as I mentioned to you before, of a new heating system, so, um, I have a lot of data, the, um, energy committee had done a very conclusive audit, um, which will help thin the grant process, um, but I'm gonna go to their, hopefully to their February meeting, um, to gain some insight, um, as to resources of replacing the heating system, so that's where we are on that one. Um, if we had money in the budget to repair the burner, so we were able to do that. Um, speaking of that, um, I have to say a huge thank you, um, and I, I'm gonna talk to my trustees tonight about backing up that thanks, a huge thank you to both Mary and Cal. Some libraries have an agreement where they have their own bookkeeper and treasurer, and in two thousand five, Elkins Book Library joined forces with the town to have Mary do, uh, our bookkeeping and at that time, I think it was Jan. So, um, I just wanted to go on record as thanking, um, the town for that, uh, both Mary and Cal do an amazing job, work very closely, um, with budget and everything, so I just wanted to go on record, um, with that, and I, I need the trustees to recognize that as well. Um, my reports are in, thank you for the helpful reminders of those, the trustees report and.
Is that what you call those, helpful reminders?
Helpful reminders.
Very diplomatic, you said.
Helpful reminders, like what, what are they do? Yes, um, and, and thank you, and so those are in, and the numbers, um, are amazing, we had one thou, uh, with fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty patron visits in twenty twenty-four, the two thousand person increase, so, um, we're very thankful to be well-loved and well-supported. Um, and the last bit of business is, I know it's too cold to be doing the work, but I haven't heard anything from Bergeron, you, I doubt you have.
I, s, I, Joel, I talked to Joel the other day, last week, two weeks ago about it, but Sam asked me about it, and he texted him and he didn't get a reply, so.
Oh, really?
I don't know what.
Yeah, because I saw him that day and then Sam was the one who reminded me to ask again, and then.
So I don't know what, I'll, let me make a note of it, I'll talk to Joel.
I mean, I wouldn't expect right now for him to come and do that, but.
This is the door on the end of the.
This is.
Yeah, the door, the, the, we're gonna build a little log house a little bit.
Yeah, and then repair the columns, he was gonna give us a price on that.
What's wrong with the columns?
The, oh, quite a few years ago, um, someone was mowing the lawn, mowed the bottom of the pillars, which are foam, you know.
Yeah, not their fiberglass, but stained.
Yeah, they're foam, I call them foam, um, and Bergeron Construction, when we were talking, Joel.
Burwick.
Burwick.
Jay Burwick.
Thank you, not Bergeron, he would have.
I was gonna say, yeah, Bergeron.
Thank you. We were at the church, oh, sorry, Burwick Construction. Mr. Burwick, Joel and I went around and it was, it was great because he suggested a little eyebrow idea, he was one of the suggestions, you had suggested that, Ken, and then he said matching the columns, and I said, well, while you're doing columns, let's look at the ones that look like someone ate the bottoms of them, and that isn't the garden entrance, and a little on, on these two, but he said he could easy, probably bond them.
Hmm.
So. And again, reminder that our meetings, um, do coincide with yours, but ours generally go long into the evening, so you're always welcome to abort as soon as you can.
Okay, have a second video.
Thank you, you just walked in my head, really.
Yeah.
Three questions? We have none, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I know.
We talked to, they had to be, I talked to those vendors here, doing that other work?
I do pizza, so.
So he's supposed to give back me about the steps at the Elkins Museum now for a month.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
And I can be held every couple weeks, and so, yeah, I'll get ahold of you, let you know my schedule is next week, Dave, I'll get, I'll get ahold of you, you too.
Right. Comes and goes and.
She hates marketing.
Oh. Don't know what.
Do I think?
I guess everybody has a lot of work.
That's it, contractors are just so busy.
Yeah.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
They change everything every year, yeah. They all get yelled at for showing up too early.
Yikes.
Yeah.
Might have heard that.
Yeah. Bus drivers telling you to leave, they're all happy. So, we've had a few snowstorms, we've had, uh, our drivers relearn their roots. Especially in the forest.
Oh.
When do we do the whole thing, or?
Uh, he was headed, till he got stuck.
Oh, no.
Yeah, actually ran out of fuel on that one, yeah, so, things break, we repair. This morning, we had Sander down, two, two wings down, we now have just two wings down, so we'll get them fixed tomorrow, the packs are on the floor, and we'll play with the white stuff tomorrow night.
Yep.
What's supposed to come through?
Yeah.
One to three?
One to three, yeah. We can handle all three.
Yeah, but then they're using that three-letter word after that, so, we've had sand hauled in, we're sitting pretty good right now. Um, I still have a door down at the highway, the overhead, and Tooms is not giving me a schedule, when I called him today, oh, we'll call you back tomorrow, maybe we'll have some idea then.
Hmm.
Um, word on the five fifty, it's built, it's not ready for us, but it's built.
Hmm.
They'll need at least a couple more days, and maybe we'll see it, and I haven't heard about the backup.
Well, that, when was that supposed to be?
Middle of January, yeah, I'd, I'd say we're pretty much in the middle of January.
It's a little past the building, January.
Yeah.
So hopefully sometime.
It's my usual look. Uh, before all the snow came, we were able to run around pretty much just fill the potholes, a little bit of grading here and there, but frost came in, but I don't think we're sitting too bad for this time of year. That thrown out, I should, anything coming back at me?
So they didn't really give you any delivery date on the truck or?
No.
Hmm.
He won't, he won't make anything hard fast.
warranty's gonna be worn out before you get it.
We run into this all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
You're free to fly.
Free to fly.
You got any?
So, again, budget, warrant articles, I have the list of warrant articles there.
That's what I was just looking at.
Um, the only, the addition, we put an addition on there for steam cleaner, and that should be ten thousand, not five thousand. Um, I had what John talked to me about a couple weeks ago, and, um, I just looked online to see what we could find, and the one that I looked at was electric model, John needs one that runs on gasoline, so you can bring it around to the culverts to use in the winter or.
What, what they're telling us is, uh, these cleaners do not like a generator.
Hmm.
Though, that's pretty much what it's running with.
Yeah, so, Kim, will the nine fourteen become nine nineteen then?
Yes.
Roughly?
Yes.
Yep, you got, you got nine thousand on a steam cleaner, is that ten or is it?
Yeah, maybe ten, uh, I had made it nine because he had a, a quote for a little over eighty-six or eighty-seven hundred, so I put nine on there on the budget, and then I got thinking about it with the way prices are today, figured, well, we're gonna bump that up another thousand bucks, just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
Because you never know, yeah, on the, on the sheet that you got here.
Yeah.
On this sheet here, Ken, uh, it's, it was five thousand.
Yeah, it's five thousand.
On the budget, I put nine, so in the budget script.
Okay.
That makes sense. If it's anything like that, four hundred ampere new socket that takes two years to get that, it'll break to ten thousand by the time it, you know.
We went over that again today at the solid waste committee, just so we could hear it all.
They didn't try to run that baler Saturday, it was too cold, because right now, the heater for the hydraulic oil is not booked out.
Right, so, because the electrical is a temporary setup in order to run the baler, but it's not to run the baler and the heater, so, uh, they can't, they can't run it, it's too cold, because I know it's too cold.
Are you seeing the new stuff?
No.
No.
You all set?
Okay, I didn't know if you were opening up dirt roads or whatever, but.
I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about that or not, using that ARCA money, uh, I talked to John and, so he was gonna put together a list of what he felt were priority roads, and then talked to a couple of contractors, um, he has material costs and, so we can have an idea of, at least a ballpark idea of what can get done for that amount of money, whether they do the work themselves, you know, with a, it's our grader and some contract trucks hauling or hiring somebody else or whatever, uh, but we're gonna try and piece.
So this is where I'm starting from, now this is tonnage and trucking only, there's no machine work, obviously two twenty, two hundred and forty thousand is not going very far if you look at those numbers.
Yep.
But those are some of the roads, I'm thinking, now, now I need to break it down into spots on the roads themselves.
Yeah.
And give you an idea of what I'm looking at, and I think I gave somebody my coffee.
Yeah. So the blue, the blue ink is John.
Ah, there you go, the original.
Here.
So John, do you plan, is your plan the most heavily traveled roads or the roads in the world? So, John, do you plan, is your plan the most heavily traveled roads, or the roads in the worst condition?
I have to look at what roads we're commuting.
Yep.
We, we have like Puffhorn and Baptist Hill are bypass roads when they have the races or events on one oh six. Um, so I'm kinda considering that.
Yep.
Uh, Munchet Hill is hard on, uh, race day, but races are kinda fizzling.
Yeah.
So, do we really wanna put money that way? Um, and that could be an expensive thing, because it's, that knob I'm talking about is right off the pavement, you can't see to get around, get over it.
Yep.
And it's narrow, but those are just, I'm just starting with, okay, these are the problem trials, and then, um, I'll have to narrow it down to try and make the money stretch, let's say.
Yeah.
I noticed on here the old tilton around the possible change at the intersection, what are you thinking on that?
So, this goes back to when the campground goes in, they were supposed to change that intersection, and nothing ever came towards me on that. But if we could pick it up, foot, foot and a half, and shave some of that gnoll down, maybe you could see to, uh, when you're coming off all tilton. Um, it's come to me through several people, they'd like to see a T there, not the two Ys.
Right.
Um, and that may help, uh.
That's right.
But we, but we don't have accidents, numbers to say, okay, we really gotta do something right here.
Yeah.
There may be close calls.
Hmm.
There's tie marks.
You all, you all know what's there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just, I just threw that out there, that's something to look at, but it's expensive.
Very expensive, yeah.
Is there a culvert that leaves that hole?
There, there, there's a culvert by the stop sign, right in the center there, that goes into the plant's field.
Hmm. Oh, it does.
You ever noticed it?
We found that in about two thousand seven.
Hmm.
Yeah, sometimes the, the tourists in the summer come down through there, and they, they have no clue that somebody may be coming up from Bob Fysen.
Right.
Around that curve, and the, and the people coming around saying, oh, I'm just gonna get some old country road.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know of any accident there.
No, no, it's just a post calls.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think I've ever been to an accident there.
No, let's hope you don't.
Right, I'm, yeah, I'm okay with it.
We do.
Yeah.
But, but I also put, I think, um, you're up over two hundred cars a day from the center to Borough Road.
Right.
Yep.
And I think it's in the planning that over two hundred years, should be looking at pavement.
Do you know that, Ken?
I was told that if I put any pavement down while I was select, then she was gonna take her vote back.
Wasn't me.
What, what do you say, that's your way out? Also, Gilmanton's in the same situation.
Yeah.
There's a lot of traffic on that road, and that is, uh, one that cries harder than the springtime.
Yeah.
I also know that anything dirt stays dirt.
I, I just noticed over the fifty years that I've lived on that road, the traffic in the last five or six years has just picked up wicked long.
Well, look at all the houses are being built up.
I know, I know.
Exactly, and I, I mentioned this to Ken, in the sense that you could take this money and put Ayers Road back, so that we wouldn't have the long dead ends of Borough and Ayers Road.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
I don't think we got enough money in the budget.
No.
Dad, you ever walk that hill?
Uh, yes.
I have.
Unfortunately, I have, I'm surprised I'm here, I've been doing it, but. Yeah, um.
So, you, you're gonna put, put forward a plan?
Um, I have to work on a plan, I'm, I'm just saying that I have tallied up some numbers, okay, and then, but now I've gotta whittle it down to that workable.
Yeah.
And.
I'm not surprised at these figures at all.
Yeah. And, I mean, if you asked me this morning, I didn't even have this much.
Yep.
Yeah.
I heard you guys were out on deer patrol this morning, so.
Yeah.
On my own?
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
Oh, really?
Somebody get a little buck or something.
Oh, no. We had, we have seven, just so you know, they, they cross right by Bobby Moretto's and go up that lane behind Golden Jackson.
Is the old one still going?
I don't know, I haven't seen it.
We haven't seen it.
You guys haven't seen it?
We haven't seen it. They lost, uh, there was a thing on the news, um, there was a town that lost that albino, uh, buck.
Really?
And two age, and they're having that special taxi business work.
Well, I haven't, we haven't seen it, we've been watching for, all our kids for that, though.
Yeah.
All the girls.
I had to tell one of my drivers, that is not fair game there.
No, no, Gil, Gil would be very upset, he doesn't feed them, but that's his girl.
So.
Well, she's, she's gonna be old.
Thanks, John.
She's old, but I think she, I think she needs it. Well, we're all set.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Check out this here.
Wanna sign some things while we're waiting for?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm sitting in my com, in a computer room looking out the window. Oops, that's three, oops, that's three, hold on, that's one. All right, let's see, I have two. The heater?
I noticed the gas heater came on earlier.
Didn't you have heard of me, I was looking at that? Just put it on the checklist.
I noticed the gas heater came on.
Oh, did it?
I don't know if this is.
We have an accounts payable manifest in the amount of a hundred and three thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars seventy cents.
Hold on a second.
Uh, account payroll manifest in the amount of forty-nine thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars twenty-four cents.
Second. You wanna sign now or later?
Oh, I'll sign it now.
We have tax defer, tax credit and deferral applications, this is one one person?
I still gotta do all the stuff in there.
For the beck and subvention.
Anyway.
Okay. I don't have to motion for those.
What's the, determine that on that?
Deferral, um, it is.
No, how, how do you determine you need a motion or not?
Um, there's certain things that we don't have to do, it's mostly your, when you're spending the town's money. And unless it's mandated by, you know, RSA, we don't have to.
Get to it over there.
Thank you. It's the second one here, Ken, hold on, what's this one, hold on, is it?
There's two different people, each paper clip. Is, compiles all the stuff for each person.
I was just looking to see.
Oh, okay, I got it, yeah, see. It's both, uh, Thayer's tax credits, so it looks very similar.
Yeah.
It looks like we make them produce a DD two fourteen.
approved, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And this investment policy is this.
Yeah, so that investment policy was, uh, originally, I think it's two thousand twenty-two on the first, that first page.
Correct, yep.
So, the auditors are in last week, and we have to, or you have to review the investment policy every year, and, um, if there's no changes, then you just sign it, and it's re, it's renewed. Um, I didn't realize that, the auditors brought it up last week, so we didn't do it in two thousand twenty-three, but they said, since they're doing the audit for two thousand twenty-three, that it's okay to do it now.
Oh, okay.
So this is likely to change, or possibly change it?
No, unless you guys see a need to change it, then there's no need to change it. And we looked at investment policies from, I don't know, five or six or seven different municipalities. Uh, we put one together for Canterbury, we had our bank look at it, we had our town council look at it, and that's the product there, so. Just asking you to, to review it, reapprove it.
Thank you, and we've got the, next we've got the minutes. Have you read them?
Yes, I have.
And I have two.
Any changes?
Nope. I would make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Go on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go on, Ken, new business, fireworks.
Yeah, uh, I got an email from the fireworks company, and they gave us some dates. Um, either Friday the fifth or Saturday the sixth. Uh, the current budget is seventy-five hundred dollars, and they can do it for that price. If we wanted to go the weekend before, Saturday the twenty-ninth, it would be seven thousand dollars, so five hundred dollars off. Um, it's up to you guys, we gotta let them know as soon as possible, though.
What you, what you thinking?
The fourth is out, they're books all up in the air.
Yeah.
Saturday, we think most people could be there, maybe, I'm not sure.
The fifth?
The fifth.
No, Saturday is the sixth, right, yeah, Friday's the.
Friday's the fifth.
Is there any reason to hold it one day over the other, or?
Not that I know of.
Nope.
It's true, more, more people would be there Saturday.
Cause Thursday's the holiday.
Yep.
Are you guys doing any of this, or is this all somebody else now?
Typically, we just stand by, that's our function, so it's, uh.
Scott used to do the whole thing, didn't he?
Yeah, but that was a long time, a lot of, yeah.
So, we live with Saturday?
Absolutely, yeah, I think, I think my preference in, uh, certainly for the fire department would be Saturday.
Right.
We'll have more people available.
Great, thank you. Um, you saw the false alarm ordinance?
Yes.
Yep.
So, if, if you have any changes, let me know. Um, if you don't, that's fine, and we'll post it, I'll talk to the police chief, and let you guys know what he thinks, and then we'll decide on whether to move ahead.
You gonna keep them separate, or?
Well, I'm gonna ask him what he thinks, what he wants to do, um, if he needs, again, the, the attorney felt that we should keep them separate. Because as an RSA, it actually applies to the fire chief, they don't do it, there is a one for the police chief, which is kinda odd, I don't know why that is, but whatever. So. Um, I have fire truck bond down here, um, so we did not get the, the, uh, grant, so we have to bond that money. Um, I contacted, uh, the attorney that does our bonding for us, and, uh, talked to them at McGrath, and they're going to, um, let's see. They are going to put, put something together for, Divine Nolet, not McGrath, Divine Nolet. Um, they're gonna put a package together for us. Um, she said, actually, it, it works out pretty good, because they're not real busy right now with this, because most towns, their budgets run, they don't till March, they don't get the bonding till March, and then the other towns that are on the June, July, uh, budget, they've already gone by. Uh, so, they feel that, um, it's pretty good, and I got some. Let's see. I had some numbers from the bond bank, here you are. They just did the bond sale on January ninth, in a five-year was two point eight nine percent, a ten-year was two point seven two percent. Um, I don't know that we wanna go beyond ten years.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Ken, if you would, just repeat, five-year is.
Five-years is two point eight nine.
Yep.
And ten is two point seven two. So, um, that was sort of bond sale, they just held, the next one is in July. So, these aren't the rates we would get, but they, unless something happens with the economy, they're not gonna be very far off.
Right.
So, she's gonna send me a packet with, uh, a five and a ten-year.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll, we'll do the, um, we'll, we'll, we'll look at some costs, interest costs and principal costs, and kinda figure out what we're gonna do. We've been putting fifty thousand dollars a year away in account reserve, and I don't know if it's four hundred and ninety thousand dollars we're gonna have to borrow. So, if we did a ten-year, fifty thousand dollars, that would give us two ten years, and then hopefully the truck will last another ten years after that. And if we continue with the fifty, that would give us five hundred thousand, and, you know, maybe half of a new truck, new truck.
I know, please, yeah.
Yes.
So, um, anyway, I'll bring, when we get all that, and we have plenty of time, it's not until July, so we have plenty, obviously, we gotta get our. Anyway, I'll bring, when we get all that, and we have plenty of time. It's not until July, so we have plenty, obviously, we gotta get our paperwork in ahead of time.
And I, I think as we move forward with that, we need to look at the, the fire department fleet.
Yeah.
And, and have some discussions about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you have a tanker, you have, we do have a camp reserve account for the rescue truck.
Yeah.
Most of that is getting close to its age limit. So depending on, you know, what vehicles you're looking at. But, and the reason we, the reason we segregated the maintenance funds was so we could see if we had a vehicle that was costing us a lot of money and we should get rid of it sooner than we anticipate.
Yeah.
So that's one thing we have to pay attention to, too.
Yeah. Hopefully, with respect to the tanker, that huge repair was just an anomaly.
Yeah, yeah.
I certainly hope.
I would hope so, too. I can't see, that was a, you know, that was the exhaust, the DEF exhaust system. They had a problem with it and it was just one of those things. And apparently, they've had a problem with it since the day they got it. That and they had some injectors that had to be replaced on it, too. So that was, they feel that, hopefully, that would take care of it. It doesn't do a lot of responses every year, so as long as it stays clean and dry and
Yeah.
the rust doesn't get to it.
Yeah. But I, I think.
Of course, it's a steel truck with water in it.
Right, exactly.
We'll take it out.
Who can say, who can say that it's gonna rust?
Right. But I do think that looming will be the rescue.
Yeah.
And that's, we should be talking with the fire chief and you about, about that.
Yeah, and, and getting a high ballpark, figure what it's gonna cost and then
Yeah.
and do the long-range planning to put the honey away.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since our, our next appointment isn't here yet, let me see what else they got on their list here. We have all the reports in for the town report.
Wow.
Good job.
I have, I have a couple. I'm working, still working a little bit on mine. And I've got some of those, some of the questions that were on yours. I'm gonna get with the other ones, look at them and try and get those completed so they should be done. Let's see. I guess at this point in the budget, I'd ask to look at the warrant articles.
Yeah.
Tonight is the night that you guys decide whether you're gonna approve them or not. And then we have to post everything for, for the public hearing on the fifth. So tonight, the budget is your really final look at. And then we, we post everything. The final, the final tally on the operating budget. Let's see. Final tally on the budget, operating budget was three million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand and forty-five dollars, which is up ninety-four thousand and two hundred and twenty-four dollars from last year, or a two point nine percent increase. Which with the, the cost of living, the CPI was right around three point seven percent. So I think anything over three percent is, I can't see how we could do any better. Certainly, you have some, some increases in some personnel areas, but we already talked about those. We have increased the staff at the transfer station and I think you guys are kind of set on the four percent increases for the employees, so I think this budget here is pretty well scrubbed. That's the operating line. We have a hundred thousand dollars in estimated revenues, which is healthcare. We got the, we put the library trustee fund in there this year, which is twenty-eight thousand dollars, which we hadn't been doing as a, as a revenue estimate. But that's, and then we also included twelve thousand from shaver disposal, which is the private hauler that hauls, they bring it to the waste energy plant.
Yeah.
And we had paid the tonnage from them.
Yeah.
And then the rest was insurance, cost shares and that was, I think that's pretty much it.
The air conditioner, where's that? Refresh my memory on the air conditioner.
So that is at the top of, on, on the historical, on the library building.
Okay.
The Historical Society, they have one of these minisplits in their records room. And it hasn't worked in five years.
Wow.
So we had somebody come out and look at it last year. And I didn't realize it hadn't worked in that long, but I had somebody come out and look at it and it was put in when the building was redone, so it's twenty years old. And it uses the old refrigerant that you don't use, you can't use anymore. So you'd have to change out the coil. And by the time they got done doing all that, they said, just put in a new one. So, so that's the cost of a new one.
Are you talking about the warrant article from twenty, twenty, from last year that says air conditioner? Or are you talking about the new warrant article that says minisplit for Historical Society? Which one, which one are you asking about?
Oh, I was, the, what did I see it? Twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
This is the, the old one.
Oh, okay.
It just has the.
Oh, okay.
Account has to be using it.
Oh, I see. So one, so that was, that was for the fire department?
Okay.
One for the fire department and then one, this one here. It was two of them last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll change that in the text.
Yeah, you can see the one for the meeting house is, and that one that just says air conditioner condenser.
Yes.
That was for the, up at the firehouse. They had, they had installed the ceiling unit when they put the building in, when they built the building. But the same thing, it was twenty years old and had the old condenser in it.
Right.
And the AC people said, yeah, we'd have to pull it all apart. And where it's mounted in the ceiling, it was gonna be a real, real job to get it out. So they said it'd be cheaper just to put in a, a minisplit, so that's what they did.
And I noticed that the website upgrade is blank and was.
We have ten thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, okay.
That's, we got some RFPs back and so that's, we haven't made any decisions yet. We haven't even, Cal and I really haven't had a chance to go over them. But, but ten thousand dollars would cover a full upgrade to the, to the website.
Okay.
Change to a different provider.
So assuming we get that money, if something can happen quickly or is it?
No.
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 It's, it's a few months-long process, so if it gets approved at town meeting, then April is when I told them that they would begin work and then most of them estimated that they'd be able to finish it by fall. So September, October is when the switch over would occur, assuming everything goes well.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we signed a contract with a current provider for another year. They're good until the first of, of this, of next of twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
It looks like a lot more stuff is going up there, huh? You posting more stuff up on the site or?
Um.
Like just forgetting what's there?
Well, between, there's a lot going on, so between Cal and I, we try and put a lot of things on there.
Yeah, and I know there's a lot of things people want to see on there that we either don't have time or don't have the technical ability to put on there. Like a lot of people ask about events, they want the calendar to be updated, but the calendar is not functional.
Yeah.
You know, I think there was one of the more asked about questions at last year's town meeting, is what I heard.
Yeah.
And if you want me to talk about that warrant article at the town meeting, I absolutely can.
Okay. That would be good.
Yeah, I can explain what it would cover.
I know how to turn the computer on and look at it.
Pull the plug to shut it off.
Yeah, yeah. Press Alt to escape.
Alt to escape, yeah. This is sort of on a different channel, but how are we coming on the rewiring of the, for the internet stuff from Comcast? Is that moving along or?
So I sent, I contacted Comcast a note two weeks ago.
Yeah, we talked about it in the last.
They haven't heard anything from the state. The state has not made any moves as far as making any amendments yet. They were supposed to have done it before the end of the year and they have not.
Yeah.
So.
But Comcast had told us they were gonna move forward anyway.
They are planning to move forward and I know that there's, and I don't know if it's them. There's a subcontractor in town that's putting a lot of cable up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Where have you seen it?
They were ready in the center this morning.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know who that is.
Yeah.
But somebody's putting a lot of cable up in, in the areas. They're up on one thirty-two or on lady thirty-two.
Yeah, that's where I saw.
So is there anything they're missing from us? We've, we've done everything we need.
We've done everything we can do.
Okay.
Yeah.
At this point. Again, if there's anything in this budget that you see, let me know. On Wednesday, we're gonna submit, we'll frame the warrant articles into language and submit it to our town council and Department of Revenue Administration.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. I've already sent off the zoning articles to town council for review.
Yeah.
So.
And the historic commission?
The HTC, I, I sent them a note, the town council also. We have those, those warrant articles. I sent them the full language on those.
Yeah.
So we're hoping that, that they come back and there's no. Typically, on the zoning amendments, they, they may have some grammar or
Yeah.
whether we have an RSA that's not exactly right or something like that. But they, they usually don't find too much in our, in our zoning board. Particularly, I was talking to Louis today about it. They've been working with Central Hampshire Planning.
Yeah.
And they, they get all their information from other towns within the central New Hampshire region. So a lot of the verbiage that they use is from some of the municipalities that's already been approved.
Right.
So I, I don't foresee any problems with, with town council or DRA. And again, it's, it's, we have a couple of questions for DRA on some of the money, how to, how to word the warrant article.
Yeah.
So, but other than that, I, most everything's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So we review that as a selectmen and say we're in favor or we suggest we're in favor?
So what we'll do is we're gonna, we'll, we'll present the warrant articles in that format. And we'll send it off to our attorney and the DRA. When they get, they send it back to us, we'll post it for the public hearing. And then you guys get to decide whether you support it or not. And that, that decision can come later on. I mean, obviously, we have to have it before, before we send it off to the printer.
Yeah.
But that doesn't have to be done. We'd like to have you do it for the town, for the public hearing, but at the same time, if you don't, that's okay. It can wait a couple of days.
Excuse me, can that public hearing's February fifth?
Pardon me?
That the public hearing is what date?
February fifth.
February fifth.
Yes. Yep. Yep. So we'll, we'll get those, get everything off to DRA and town council on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And as soon as we get it back, we'll post it on our website and print the copies up and put it in the, in the town office and probably down in the library.
Ken, just one budget question.
Yep.
Central Hampshire Planning.
Yep.
The three thousand that I see in the budget.
Yes.
Is that the total for their services for the town? In other words?
The typical cost of, the typical, excuse me, the typical cost of their contract cost
Yeah.
is, you can see it was three thousand and thirty-three dollars this year.
Right. So that's everything, though?
That's everything.
Planning?
That, that's for their services.
Yeah.
If they do, we obviously have a different contract with them for the master plan and zoning amendments and all that stuff, so that's separate.
Yeah.
But that's the cost of their subscribing to Central Hampshire.
Yeah, and is it within, like, planning that I would see?
Yes.
I guess what I'm trying to ask is total, how much are we paying them or did we pay them last year?
So if we go to planning.
Well, I'm actually trying to find planning now. I haven't got there yet.
It's just above, it's above the, the government buildings. Professional Services, forty-one ninety-five, forty-five.
Forty-one ninety-one, forty-five.
Yeah, forty-one ninety-one, forty-five.
So is that for planning?
That's professional services we're planning for.
Okay.
And you can see we budgeted five thousand.
Yeah.
And we expended twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five. That was part of that contract and then we got a grant for the, we got that, we got that grant.
Yeah.
So that, that's where. Well, the five thousand is typically for either a special project by Central Hampshire Planning or if they need to hire an attorney for a specific project or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
That's what the professional services line is.
Okay. So we didn't really pay Central Hampshire twenty thousand?
We did not. Well, we did, but we got.
We got a grant back, yeah. And what, how much was the amount of the grant?
That was, is that twenty? We got two, right?
I think we got two for ten.
Two for ten, two of ten each.
So really, we essentially got most of their services for free last year.
For, for that, that part of the project.
Yeah.
Yeah. The three thousand dollars includes, they'll do a traffic, that traffic study.
Yeah.
We get, what is it, three or four or five roads a year.
Right.
That they do traffic counts on.
Yeah.
They came and helped John with the road maintenance software because our software crashed and it was not recoverable. So they came out, and again, as part of their contract fees, they came out and they drove all the roads
Yeah.
and inputted data on the condition of the roads.
Yeah.
And then gave the project to John, so he can, he can input data now.
Yeah. And is CBA using their services for anything?
Well, yeah, he's, that's what, that's what they're doing. He's, if he has any questions or anything, he contacts them.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
And are they, but how does, is that included within our subscription?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's part of the subscription. That's all the extra.
Yeah, understood. That's what, yeah. Okay.
Can they provide us guidance on, again, if we're gonna come up with an ordinance or something like that? We can contact them and ask them, you know, one of the municipalities in the area have this?
Yeah.
Their experience. That's all part of the subscription.
I think they've been, you know, for us, a very good.
Yeah, I, for three thousand dollars.
Exactly.
I, I mean, certainly, could we contact our attorney, but then it's gonna be a bit more.
Right.
And so we just, I think Central Hampshire, and they're, they're real good about, they, they apply really quick and they print a lot, a lot of the maps for us and no cost, so all these conservation maps and
Yeah.
road maps and all that stuff is printed there, so they do all that.
Yeah.
Sam's here.
Hey, Sam.
Hello, I know.
How's it looking up there, Sam?
Oh, we're getting there.
Yeah.
It'll all be fine.
Yep.
One extra.
Two extra to do for Cal.
Look, did you get one?
I got one.
No, okay.
I thought you did over Cal.
No, it's alright. It's all okay.
More is more.
List of unpaid receivables is not out of the ordinary for January.
Yep.
After tax bill. Today's the twenty-second, then probably after twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, I'll be sending out the, the dining notices reminding people. On the very top of the list are the twenty-twenty-one lien that's gonna come due this spring. Those are the two people that are on the dealing list. The second of which is an occupied property, so. Just so we have that on the radar.
I've had no feedback.
I've had no, no conversations and no feedback. So. That's what that says. Similarly, we've got that outstanding timber tax from last year on the end of the last page where we, I got a phone call that said, oh, we'll make payments, and I haven't received any payments. So maybe the Barrington notice in January is gonna push that along a little bit. I did record a copy of the tax bill back this fall at the registry, so anybody who pulls title for that property under his name is gonna come up with that tax bill that's outstanding. And that's, it's just gonna be like a regular redemption, but they'll get a receipt recorded once it's paid, so.
Yep.
That's the last line?
Yeah, it's the last line for the outstanding timber tax.
Yep.
'Cause usually we don't really carry a balance of timber tax like that ever, so. Other than that, we've got the election tomorrow and that's it.
You're there at six thirty.
Six thirty.
Anything you need done in particular?
No.
I told Ellen that I worked the checkout and I was gonna share, right?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we've got enough people, we've got enough ballots, we should be good, so. Questions for me? Well, the initial bring up is the property, the lumbering property. We're giving attorneys, our attorney and their attorney, and the twenty-one up in our office. And we've been getting feedback or responses from all the fifty-something letters that we sent out to relatives and. So we'll see what happens.
Yep.
Alright.
That's it.
Thank you.
Do you need more?
We're bringing coffee, right?
I got coffee. You bring your own coffee.
Have you kind of bring your coffee machine to your office?
It's up there, there it is.
Of course you do.
I had no idea it was a thing.
I'll get all our coffee right there.
It is a thing.
It is, I mean, I will be tomorrow.
You don't want a lot of people to have nothing coffee.
Right. It's a cranky people.
Anything else?
Um, oh, we have Sam Steber here.
By the hair of my chinny-chinny-chinny.
We would've waited for you.
You would've?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. Are you ready for me?
Sure, come on up. I think you guys have all the emails. This is the paperwork on the property there and a bunch of things.
Okay, you do have that because that was one of my hands, my coffee machine.
Yeah, no, I got, they, they have a copy there.
I just wanted this part to stand out. One of them, I didn't have enough on the third page, so.
Oh, yeah.
Nineteen sixty-nine?
Yeah.
Is this the same board? I'm sorry, I'm not on top of it. That was here.
No.
Oh.
No. Uh, Scott was selected last March.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I think.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll tell you later. I just highlighted the parts that really is my main point to all of this. Which, was there a lawyer and all that happy stuff? No, but it was an agreement, I felt. Should I talk while you're looking or, or wait?
This is the same thing you sent us right up on the email?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, well, basically, um, as I told you, Ken, I think I did, but I was unemployed for like five months. It kinda threw me off, but aside from that, I, wasn't the assumption, because we had had an agreement, I offered to give a thousand dollars to put down on a property that he had already met with the board of selectmen and said that they, I was trying to get it for less 'cause, you know, I'm, I'm out there, I'm on my own. I've lived here for fourteen years, single income, I'm doing the best that I can. I just turned sixty-five and I'm not retiring anytime soon. I know, I don't look at it, right? Is that what you're all thinking? No, anyway. So the point is, I'm working hard. I put down, I wanted to give a thousand dollars, came in back and the board had said, keep the thousand, when you get the other fifteen hundred, you can have a property. I, it didn't have a time limit, it didn't say, you know. And even, I didn't get any notification saying, oh, and by the way, you know, we're gonna be changing the way we do things and how we sell the properties over here. I had, was totally not aware of any of those changes. So when I re-approached, um, that's when I heard things changed a little bit and I was caught off guard. I mean, I did all I could to get the twenty-five, I said I was ready to do it. So for me, I felt that we had an agreement. The property half of it is ledge. I get nervous, understand that I was a pain in the neck, I know, years ago when the bishops tore down so many trees. I'm a tree person, you know, I bought a place, it was nestled in the pines. All those trees are gone, and now, as you probably know, um, you sold property to Pelkey. He has a right, I guess, but he's now torn down all the trees at the end of the road, Canterbury. So now I drive and it's houses everywhere. Which is bothersome, but I get to just go to my house now and my neighbor, um, who we get along, I get along great with him, he lives behind me, he's only there seasonally. He's the other property that's on the other side. I didn't really talk about it with him 'cause I didn't want him to be uncomfortable, I just, you know, the, the two of us, you know, we could, we're fine. I gotta be honest, I'm a little nervous when rules change. I'm not aware of it, I don't wanna find out that suddenly somebody else has the right to buy that property and that makes me nervous. And that is an example when the town makes a decision to change things. I want that, okay, so now, wish I brought water, I suppose I can't drink out of your pot. No, I'm kidding. But the other thing, the property next door, lately we've been having an attack of the beavers. These beavers have taken a lot of my trees, um, but they're on rampage. They're like, I had to go out and buy fencing, I, I sent you the photos, did they get to see the photos?
I sent them the form and the photos.
Oh, alright, well, I know you did that, but, but the photo, I went about fencing, is, um, there's probably, well, there's at least three or four on my property, the property, your, the town's property, there's probably, uh, three or four that I have bought fencing to protect the trees. And I even went to my neighbors and as far over I could see, because I don't know how many beavers are, when they go out for looking for food, how many are doing it? If it's like five or six and those guys just, I mean, we had that first snow, so I could actually see the trail. They come right out from underneath the pond and take it off and it's right across from me that they have their little place, but, um, and I had a problem with them a year or two ago, but then they went away and I thought, yay, but they were back. So basically, that's why I want to make sure, I'm taking care of the property anyway, nobody's gonna be able to buy it. I feel like we had an agreement. I feel like it's more than a gentleman's agreement. I was told and I'm ready to pay that and I have the money for it.
I guess do we have, or did we have an agreement?
So the email that I spent, that I sent on August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, was, I checked with the selectman, they would like to have you hold on to a thousand dollars when, when you have the balance, fifteen hundred, the other, they would sell you the property, the property next door to you. We haven't had any interest in the property from anyone else and the selectmen aren't going to sell it as a single building lot, they're only willing, they're only selling town-owned lots to butters with deep restrictions on overdental, additional residential construction. And then I wrote, if you do buy the land, the other lot is across the street, the town owns one, they would mostly consider that you or a butter there 'cause you expressed interest in it.
Right, I was curious about one other property, I thought I had a lot of.
At the time, back in August of two thousand twenty-two, it, the town valued that lot at twelve thousand two hundred. As of today, with the rebau, it's valued at thirty-eight thousand seven hundred, so.
That, that particular lot or all of the lots?
No, that one, that one lot next to you.
Point being, in writing, it says. I, I understand that.
And, I, I mean, I, I'm just, you know.
Right.
I'm kind of the middle man here.
Well, I, I'm a firm believer in the word and I was told that you come up with the money, you can have that property. I have nothing saying anything different.
So what do you think is the expiration date on that?
Well, there isn't one, but it's only a year, it's, it has been a year and a little bit or whatever, but I'm not talking about.
But in that time, the value of the property has gone up dramatically.
But if you had accepted the thousand dollars, it would have been, it would have been, um, something that I could have deposited on.
But we couldn't have accepted the thousand dollars.
Well, I, I, again, that's, I don't know what you're, the way you do things, but I was told in writing, come up with the other fifteen and then you can have the property. I, I just feel like it's very, what do you think?
If I was buying a piece of land and I really wanted it, I would come up with whatever the town thought was a reasonable price. We thought it was worth twelve something or other at that point, correct? You wanted to pick it up for twenty-five hundred bucks. I mean, I like all kinds of things too, but they don't necessarily happen. And I don't know that I feel this is, this is something that, uh, that we had an ironclad agreement where people's names are put on a piece of paper.
It's an email from the town office, Ken, sent to me.
Yep.
I mean, there was a time when you could have a verbal agreement. So I know I would have been definitely screwed on that one, but this is written right there. I don't have any other emails saying, we are, you know, I know we had a tentative agreement or we had an agreement, but at this point, we are that, nothing. Nobody communicated anything about the reassessments that were done or anything. I'm, I'm asking that you honor what my understanding was an agreement. It's from the Canterbury Town Office. And I think you're the administrator, correct? Alright?
Yep.
But the whole town was reassessed when this is done, so it was town-wide, so didn't your assessment go up?
Maybe I didn't notice, I don't know. I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of the. It's about, it's about honoring an agreement.
Well, a lot of, you say it's an agreement.
Yes, this is an email.
That states the town.
At that time.
It didn't say, it didn't say this will expire.
No.
I'm not five years later, I'm a year and a half later.
We talked about this a little bit and we had agreed on somewhere around ten, I think is what we were looking at. If we went and sold all those pieces of land up there for whatever somebody thought they were worth, we'd get thrown out of office probably. You know, we're looking out for the town's interest in this. I know it's not your interest, but that's what we're looking at.
Okay, but that property is only available to the butters. Is that something that you're gonna be changing possibly in the future so that somebody is gonna now? See, I feel like, I, I, I feel very vulnerable to whatever is the town decides. You decided twenty-five hundred was, was fine a year and a half, I understand that you've done a reassessment. I don't, I know there was a period when we talked about how many houses can be built in this section that brings in a lot of taxes and now we've got another building going up. There's hardly any trees in the area where I live. So if I don't buy it, if my neighbor doesn't buy it, then who's gonna be able to buy it? He's not going anywhere, I'm not going anywhere. I'm staying until I have to put a ramp in.
So those are certainly your choices, correct? They're not our, we don't dictate them or anything else.
My choices of what?
How long you wanna be there?
Right.
I don't care how long you're there, right? You don't care how long I stayed in town, I've been here a lot longer than you. So let's, let's just look at it from the town's perspective, which is what we're looking out for here.
So, um, I'm offering, I, I'm asking that you honor something that was said to me from the town. I offered a thousand so I could make sure that it was a, it was a done deal. That's usually what people do, they put a deposit, maybe that's not what the town does, I don't know all of your rules. I don't think I'm being unreasonable.
I don't think we can take deposits, as long as I've been here.
We've never done a, a payment plan on any property.
That's fine, so your plan, but then, after you spoke to the selectmen, was come up with the rest of it and you can have it, period.
And it was no purchase and sales, there was no, I mean, it was an email and it was,
Right.
And, and I guess, again, in, in eighteen months, property value, that property value more than doubled. And, um, I mean, I, I don't know, I, again, I, I just think that that seems a little unreasonable for someone to expect that eighteen months later, the, the price of a piece of property is not gonna change. That's my thought.
It's property that you can't build on, it's property that the beavers have attacked, it's half of it is, is a, on ledge. I mean, I feel that we had an agreement. This is an old town, they have old ways of being fair and talking. I would think this is a fair, I don't think I'm being unreasonable. I've been maintaining it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not your property to maintain.
Right, I was just trying to save the trees that the beavers were taking, okay. So, that was my bad, I guess. Can't thank me.
Yeah, but it, it still, the bottom line is it's not your property.
I, I, I don't see how we can give it away for that moving thing.
You can't.
And I, it's probably not gonna make you happy, but I'm not hearing anything that tells me I have to. And if I go out there and tell my fellow citizens that I sold a piece of land for twenty-five hundred bucks that was on water, they're not gonna be happy.
Well, um, you could also mention that you agreed to that plan and it's in.
No, you sent us some emails and we didn't do anything with it because what are we supposed to do with it? Start negotiating with you over a thousand dollars that we didn't ask for? Right? It's not our.
At the time.
Well, you may have felt that way, but.
Well, at the time, you told me, or I don't know, were you here last year? I'm not sure.
I was here, but I don't remember this conversation at the time.
Yeah, and it was twenty twenty-two, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, not last.
Over a year.
Yeah.
Right. I, I, I'm surprised, it's, it's, it's right there from the office saying, if I have up the money, then I can get that property. So, what is the word, what's the value of the word here?
No, that's, that's not a fair thing at all.
It's, I, you know.
This is an, um, an email, uh, it's just not an agreement, it's, this is.
It's a, it's like a gentleman's agreement, you know the gentleman's agreement back in the time? Old Canterbury here, the old gentleman's agreement were honored. Of course, there were men making agreements with men, but a gentleman's agreement was honored. This is one step up.
Yeah, but we, we no longer do gentleman's agreements.
Okay, so this is one.
We can't.
If anybody in the town has a problem, then you just, like I said, grandfathered in or whatever, this was an agreement. It was between you and me, that email's, okay, so.
He's not the one that turned the salesman's deal, so we've got to look to hear. If I don't hear some negotiating here, I'm not interested in listening to anymore, I guess. You've said it about four times, I've heard it each time. We're not, we're not in the business of being land salesmen and running a business that does that kind of thing here. We're looking out for the town's interests and that doesn't mean taking the lowest number that you want to offer.
I'm telling you the number that I scraped up to make so I could finalize this deal. And now, you want me to start negotiating?
I, I wanna hear something other than what you've repeated because it's not going anywhere with this.
I know that, I knew that the minute I sat down.
Okay.
Your body language speaks volumes, by the way.
I didn't hear anything.
Doesn't feel very warm. Yeah.
So, run to the selectors and see how this feels, right? Come in here and do what we do.
I don't have the money, I don't have.
I don't know either.
You know what, you're, you're so patronizing right now, you're very rude.
Okay.
And I don't know how you've got, well, maybe that's why the town has you.
That could be too.
Sorry if I'm happy. I could borrow five hundred more, I could make it three thousand, but that's as far as, I don't have the money, I'm a single person. I work. Otherwise, it's gonna sit there. I'm leaving. I'm.
Yeah.
So, you're not gonna honor?
It's not a matter of not honoring, this was an actual agreement. It's, am I wrong?
Oh, why are you asking him? You know what he's gonna say.
I'm asking you.
Let me agree with that, so.
You're, so, nobody's knocking our door down to buy the thing because they can't. It's never gonna get sold, is my guess, because you're the one that has controlling whip hand on this one. I suppose if the guy next to you on the other side wanted to do it, but he hasn't, I mean, I went up and looked at it, just so you know that I, I went and drove up through there.
Oh, roll that, we don't have cloud, right.
That's right, you don't, because you're in an illegal subdivision or whatever you want to consider it up there, we don't have.
I know you're angry, I know.
I'm not angry.
You are you.
No, it, it.
We feel, it feels it. But it's, like, you know, I, I pray that this is gonna be different.
Nope.
Nope. We can't.
And, and why can't you? I wanna hear why you can't, because this board makes a lot of decisions. How come the board can't make that decision based on what I've given?
So, the responsibility of this board is to look out for the fiscal interests of the town of Canterbury. You're not making us a reasonable offer for the value of that property now.
Did I miss an email or some notification that?
No.
I never was sent anything. So, it's blind sign.
Or how, how were you blindsided?
Feel, feel low the way you want, I, I mean, you, it's not, you are the one who wanted the property. I don't think it's up to myself and I don't wanna speak for the board of selectmen. But unless I'm directed to let you know that the price has changed or that the, the offer is no longer in place, um, I, I just don't.
Do you think that's fair? Do you think that's treating?
Yeah, I do, I.
You do think it is, because your interest is, is the town, right? So.
The, the, my office and the board of selectmen deal with a three million dollar, over three million dollar budget every day. And, um, in a case like this, I, I don't feel that, um, notifying you eighteen months after the fact that the price has changed is unreasonable in today's world.
Okay, who was, whoever was on the board at that time agreed. So, anything can happen then, you guys can just sit here and change.
They can change their minds at the whim.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you can agree on things at the whim, but you wanna make a point here. Your decision was made, that's why I want it.
You're gonna interpret this, I don't think you're gonna change your mind, I'm not going to either at this point. You sat there and denigrated me and told me I'm not looking out for your interest, well, I think I am. Because you wouldn't feel that way about it if some other piece of land sold that we sold and we didn't get what it was worth.
You sold a piece of waterfront for three thousand.
All kinds of land has changed hands up there over the years. We both know that. We gave more than that for backland.
Okay. So, that is your decision that you are not gonna honor what was written in that email? And you're gonna let the people know that?
So, that's our decision, not this.
No, not this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were part of this somehow.
The select board decides.
Yes.
And you the board, just the three of you?
Just the three of us.
Okay.
So, be angry at the right people.
I'm not, I'm extremely disappointed.
You think you're disappointed?
I'm extremely disheartened by how
I don't care with that, so.
The people prior to you made an agreement and you are not gonna honor it.
In your mind, they made an agreement, I don't agree. So, you disappeared for eighteen months, there was no contact, right?
I don't wanna stick back. But what difference does it make right now? You've made your mind up, you made your mind up before I sat down. I'm sorry.
Whatever you wanna think, I don't know you from anybody else.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't feel very welcomed here, I don't know, I mean, I, the minute I sat down, just, I'm, I'm from the sugar forest. Maybe continue the time.
Today? That was the last thing on the agenda. If anybody has anything else.
We're all done with the budget then.
As far as I can tell.
Okay.
Alright.